Well, actually, the public hearing on our safety committee. As you recall, every year I give you an update on our safety plan. And just as a brief overview, this is our district safety plan, not those building level plans that remain confidential. So I'll go through some of that here briefly with you and some of the updates tonight. Because on the agenda tonight, you're approving the board, the district safety plan that's been on the board, the website for the past 30 days of the comment period and actually closed last week on the sixth.
Have you ever approved it tonight or next?
I'm sorry, the next board meeting, the next board meeting. I apologize. So it works. So just a little bit of background, now you have these links in your weekly update. But having said that, this all stems from section 2801A of New York State law, which guides district safety planning. I'll run a little bit of background on this here in a second. But just briefly, the state began working with a number of agencies, I have them listed here, I won't read them to you, to develop statutory amendments and updates to safety planning back in 2016, which is what guides our work still today. Now, every year, those of you on the policy committee realize we've got updated policies that make changes every year to pieces of the safety plan. As you recall, last year it was preventative work. This year it was the pandemic planning, and I'll review that in a moment because that's a piece that's added. But some of that remains confidential, so you don't see all that on the board, on your agenda, on your board agenda, or on the website. All you'll see is the district plan, just sort of the oversight. Some of the statutory amendments they provided at the time that continue today are communication with parents, staff development, specific annual training that you see on opening days that we provide every year. Last year we did that remotely. The designation of a chief emergency officer, which is, which is me, though I do facilitate our safety committee along with Mr. Romhado, our director of facilities. Development of a district safety committee, which is comprised of myself, Mark, of course, as well as administrators and teachers, and we have a esteemed board member as part of our safety committee. And we also have our students as well represented with our safety committee, as well as folks from the emergency services within the community. So our Amherst Police Department, Amherst Fire, as well as emergency services located right over here on Harlem Road. Some of the other pieces that it guides is our requirements around policies and procedures, including much of which is developed through the ICS, which is the Incident Command System. You may remember, it's driven by Secret Service work for years, and it's what drives all of our structure here today. So I'll share a couple of examples with you in a moment. But most importantly, it provides us the consistent language. We know that's really important in the classroom with our students, and we know it's equally as important when we look at safety. And when we, teaching and learning occurs every day, every minute, every period, every changeover, you go through what good teaching and learning looks like. Thankfully, you don't have to visit what an emergency looks like all the time. So that's why it's that much more important to have a consistent language, so we all know what to do and when to do it. Part of that then is driven by the 12 drills that are required every year. Everyone knows about those eight evacuation drills, or what we know as fire drills. And then the other are the four lockdown drills mentally, and there are also requirements during summer school. So just briefly, some of those state regulations also require buildings have their own teams as well. So each building has emergency response team that's driven and led by their administration. Our planning folks in the area, including Amherst Police, Fire, and Emergency Management join as well, including Gary Wombosi's facilitator, Mr. Quazala, if you've met Dennis Quazala before. He's a fantastic resource and provides us with a lot of information, updates from behind the scenes stuff before we know it's, before the state puts it out, he sort of provides us a lot of helpful information. I also have to thank Emergency Management, because what they do a great deal of in MS McLaughlin, you've seen this, is they come in and do tabletop activities. So they'll run through our plans with us and come up with basically a sort of a fake sort of moment in life and how would you handle that to look at gaps, so essentially doing a gap analysis or any holes that might exist. It's also just good practice. As I said, you don't go through emergencies too often, so it's important to practice them and run through scenarios. Some of that membership, you may ring very similar to what I was saying before. Administration, our teachers, parents, school safety personnel, our head of director facilities, as well as the head custodians each building are a member, as well as our clerical staff. And there's a reason why, it's because everyone fulfills a role within Incident Command System model. And what you'll see here is an example of some of the binders we use. So each building, as well as Mr. Pennella's office, has a set of binders that identifies each role within the ICS model. So that in that moment, those folks have already been trained in what they do as, let's say you're the finance and administration individual, or logistics. You know at the time what your role is, you've been reviewed, it's gone over with you, you've done tabletops, but the time, like I said, sometimes you don't remember all of that. So within that binder is an exact reference of what your roles and responsibilities are, as well as all the materials you'll need in that moment, including phone numbers for teachers, phone numbers for students, contact information, roles and responsibilities, a checklist of what exactly you have to do to try and support the incident commander, which is typically the building principal, or in the district's case, Mr. Penn. So it's important to differentiate between those four emergency response plans, one per building, as well as the district safety plan, which is what we'll be approving at the next board. As I mentioned before, it's been up on our website for the past 30 days, actually a touch more now. As of the sixth, it's been up 30 days. I did not receive any requests or any feedback or any comments, so we're okay to move forward. And on the next board meeting and board agenda, as Ms. Custody pointed out and corrected me, will be there for your approval. Just a little bit about that plan, just briefly. There are six sections. This has remained static, so you've seen these before, but just briefly, there's an introduction section, a classification of level of threat, so where that falls in terms of a tiered level of threats, from low to high, of course. Some of those protective and response options the district has, and those are folded into our emergency response plans within the buildings. Some faculty and staff actions, and that's not just for those Incident Command System roles, it's for anyone, what to do in the case of, so our teachers are trained on that as part of opening days. The incident coordinator and what their role and responsibilities are, the teams, as I was referencing before, those building level teams as well as district team. And lastly, what was added this year, which is an appendix, and that's our district-wide communicable disease continuity of operations plan that's in all form. I call it our pandemic plan. So of course, our reopening plans from last year, and then what we're working on now for this upcoming year, covers all of those requirements. But that was a piece that was required to be added for this upcoming school year based on law and, of course, policy that followed. So the one major update, as I referenced, was that continuation of operations plan. You may remember, I presented on that back in March. We got some guidance wrong, well, actually it was put out in December, but there wasn't any guidance until around February. And then it was in March, we were able to pull that together and get that to you for your support, and then it was required, of course, be up and running by April 1st. So these are those components of that plan. I know I've already gone over this with you pretty thoroughly, just a few months ago. But again, as a reminder, this all has to be folded into the full plan. So at the end of our plan, actually what I did is I hyperlinked it, because otherwise the document would be rather lengthy. So this is all linked to that as required. The other change that we have to update annually is our agreement with the Amherst Police Department for our school resource officer. So the only other change truly in the document is a hyperlink. And that is to the updated agreement, as I think they signed off in May, if I'm not mistaken, for the following year. And that is it, in case you have any questions. So in that case, I can close the public hearing. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right, then. We'll call our meeting to order and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all. We have no visitors wishing to speak and no written communication this week. So speaking of report of board committees, it looks like I'm going to tell you a little bit about when Supervisor Culpa came to our meeting, Mark and Paul and I were able to attend the administrative retreat that Tony was holding for his cabinet. And Brian Culpa, the town supervisor, as well as Lori Stillwell, who's the community development director, were representing the town. And he did an exhaustive, originally was scheduled from 9:00 to 11:00, and we didn't leave there until probably quarter of 12:00. So there was a lot of information given. There were a couple of things that I think are worth passing along to this group, because they pertained particularly to our area. In April 2020, they developed a 10- to 20-year plan for the town. The scope is huge, and it's too much to relay, obviously, but the main areas of development included Boulevard Central project, which is the existing mall on Niagara Falls Boulevard. And there's a plan to turn it into basically a neighborhood. And right now, it's a mall, which doesn't require as much water, sewer, you know, all the things that you would require for, so it's, the plan is to kind of do it in pieces. But when you see the before and after, it's actually an entire neighborhood built around Macy's and, you know, a couple of the stores still being there. So yeah, it's interesting. And then Amherst Central Park, which is Westwood, Country Club, Audubon Golf Course, and the Northtown Center. And his vision involves indoor/outdoor athletics, ice rinks, walking paths, trails, all these things. He is actually, there was a story in the Amherst Bee, you know, where he said that he is going to be having public presentations, and the dates aren't out yet, but he is planning to give basically the presentation he gave to us to everyone, so I would recommend attending one of those to hear more about that. There's a significant increase planned in the medical space along Sheridan Harlem, Sweet Home. And then Amherst Central School District area, the Squire project, you know, should be done by the end of next year, he's thinking, but it is expected to start this fall, and that'll be a mixed-use development. And then the interesting thing to me that I didn't know about is that he had a picture of where Denny's is now standing, and it was a Barnes &amp; Noble and a Starbucks. So that should be interesting. And then for Park School, he envisions a science and nature center there at some point. In the Windermere area, M.J. Peterson is, I guess, in the process of securing federal funds to renovate the two low-income housing developments that are there. And he wants that whole neighborhood right now has been transitioning to rental properties, and they have a registry for people who are landlords. And he would like to try to have a push to convert those back to homeowners, because homeowners take better care of their properties, and that would help the property values in that area. And they are developing a plan to have a Cedar bus that would run between Damon and ECC. And I think, you know, in conjunction with Mr. Pennella, they're going to try to see if there's a way that we could have like a low-cost option for our students also. It would be free to the Damon and ECC students, but if our families could take advantage of that, then, you know, there'd be better mobility throughout the town of Amherst. And eventually, he would like something to be done with University of Plaza, but there's no solid plan there at the moment. He's trying to work with different developers to see who he can get to get excited about that project, and TOPPS has said that they will stay. And he will be hosting a series of meetings at some point, we just don't know the dates of those yet. So it was long and interesting, and we'll see what happens.
Mr. Sperans, I can just throw in a couple more observations, since I had to be there for the two hours and 30 minutes. Damon's getting a much bigger footprint in our district in addition to this trolley that they're sponsoring with ECC that will go up down Main Street, but also shoots down, got Hopkins's three different names, shoots down the Wakemans on Sheridan. One of the ideas being the, Damon actually has a commuter problem. So for the East Town commuters, they can now park at ECC and ride the trolley into Damon. So part of the effect there is lower that. The co-brand of Barnes &amp; Noble Starbucks is actually Damon's bookstore. So they're in that Barnes &amp; Noble project. The other thing I thought was interesting, if you picture the overpass on Main Street where the 290, 190, or whatever it is, the 290 and 90 come together, the ramps on the south side of Main. So we're heading into the Village, we, so the ramps to the right is made into the Village. They're going to demo all those and turn it back into something, and then all of the access and exits will be on the north side. So as opposed to having a traditional Cloverleaf, you're going to have on-ramps and off-ramps. And then Damon's taking that little pocket park that sits on the east side of the 290 exits, you're coming to exit on the Main Street East, there's a little park with the pantry, I know, with the swings and a small ball field, and they're going to put in a D2 lacrosse field, tennis courts, soccer.
Where's, where's, like, where?
It's Caldwell Park. So you're getting on Main Street off of the 290 heading east. You got all the high tension wires over your head, they're right, there's a tiny little park and everything.
There is?
Yeah.
You can see it from behind it, when you're kind of coming up, right?
So again, Damon's really putting a lot of effort into this geography.
Oh, I know. That's terrifying.
Yeah.
That's terrifying.
It's terrifying now.
Well, yes, direction, yes.
The way it's designed, well, I don't know, and it's Culpa's plan, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the intent was to make it more pedestrian-friendly on at least one side of the street, because it's pretty hazardous now on both sides with exiting and entering traffic.
Walking, biking.
So one side could be more pedestrian-friendly, so all the exiting and entering traffic is on the other. At least that's what I took from the explanation.
There is a lot, and I mean, we only touched on some of the ideas, so I would highly recommend, if you have the opportunity to attend one of his road show meetings, do it.
Do we have a timeline, like, how soon certain things, like, what was coming first or anything?
No, really, for us, the thing that's coming first is the Squire project. I mean, this thing he's talking about with the Cloverleaf is, you know, this is a 10- to 20-year plan.
Right.
Yeah. And the mall project on the Boulevard is going to be done in pieces, you know, so you will see one piece first, and then five years later, you'll see another piece, and then five years later, you see, you know, it's really a long, long-term plan.
And Royal Berkeley was talking about eight years ago.
It'll be done in the timeline of a Skyway. Right.
They talked, they talked about the Allen Hurst and Princeton Court renovations starting, I feel like, in 2022. So that will be happening sooner than later. So there's a state funding, I think, for that. You may have said federal, if I misheard you.
Oh, is it state?
That it was state funding. But there's also a big INI sewer project associated with that, too, that will benefit more than just the residents of Allen Hurst and Princeton, because there's major issues with the town sewer and INI initiative over there, so.
Is any of that to do with Allen Hurst or is property's different than what conversations were before? Was state funding always going to be the funding of those Allen Hurst?
Yeah, state funding and pilot program.
That Squire section there, are they knocking that down or just building?
The other building's in rough shape. There's not much there to be used.
There was some discussion about Niagara Falls Boulevard and Bailey Avenue, but I don't know if there was anything definitive in there. I can't recall. Like I said, it was a long presentation.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah.
There has been a whole Bailey Avenue project on the Bucks for a long time, too. So it's, he's kind of taking it all and packaging it as, you know.
A lot of what he was, is the biggest hurdle, according to what he had presented, was the difficulty and how things were zoned initially. So they took on a big initiative in the town of rezoning a lot of areas to allow for more mixed-use projects, as opposed to having them be designated as, you know, business or residential only. So I think they've crossed that hurdle, which opens up some doors.
And Mark Smith had some feedback from the audit committee?
Yeah, after that report, it must be pretty brief and pretty benign. Ms. Bezinski hosted a meeting with Dr. Shavalki, myself, and Mr. Tan for the opening of the yearly audit. The German conversation was around who's assigned and what's the timeline and when they're going to report to the board, when we vote. Really, the only interesting, not the only, the interesting comment that I held onto was the student activities piece is going to be pretty easy this year, because based on COVID, there were very few student activities last year that involved expenditure. So nothing more to report than it's well-oiled and ready to go, and more news to follow.
Are there any other media reports? With that then, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, I wanted to publicly recognize St. Paul's Lutheran Church and our partnership with Pastor Steve Bieger. I wrote them a letter of, you know, thanking them, and I'll just read a couple lines from it. "On behalf of the Amherst Central School District, I want to acknowledge and thank you for your efforts during the 2021 school year to provide meals to our community through the daily bread food truck. We were amazed and humbled to learn that you had distributed over 5,000 meals between September and June." So that's a great partnership that we have with Pastor Steve, the St. Paul's Lutheran Church, and the Tigers Den Food Pantry, and now our Family Support Center. Over 5,000 meals served right here in our community to our families, and many times it was done during the time when we were closed for holidays or breaks, and they picked right up and were there to provide meals to families when we may not have been serving them to our students or families. So I just wanted to make sure, although I wrote them a nice letter, that they were publicly recognized, that this forum and everyone was aware of that accomplishment or that great contribution to our families. Secondly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the board topics for 2021. First and foremost, I've proposed a switch of the September 7th board meeting to August 31st. There's two reasons. One, September 7th is the first day before students come back to school, and all of you have students in our schools, and I was assuming you may want to be home with them the night before the first day of school as opposed to being here. The second was that it will allow us to give, it allows to have an opportunity to present the updates to our COVID safety plans prior to the start of school to the board, and that timeframe seems to work with what we're expecting in the next couple of weeks. So my first question is, is everybody okay changing to 9:07 to 8:31?
Yes.
Yes.
Secondly, one thing that we did last year, and as you know, we have a lot of exciting renovations going on at our high school right now, we'd also like to be able to visit our schools. And one thing we tried last year was to do it on the night of a board meeting. So you'll notice for August 31st, I have scheduled a phase two and phase three construction update. My thought was that we may convene at the buildings around 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, visit each school, end at the high school, and then possibly have the board meeting at the high school and have the board meeting following our board visits. Last time we met at 4:00, but we also had dinner. So if we didn't have dinner before the board meeting, we could probably meet at 5:00, and that gives us two hours before the board meeting, and we could spend about 15, 20 minutes at each of the buildings, and then probably a good chunk of time at the high school, where most of the renovations are taking place. So I'm thinking if we moved along 5:30 at Windermere, what we'll probably do at the elementaries is just take a look at a typical classroom setup, because there's not a lot of projects going on in, at the other buildings except for the high school. So we visit each building, get to the high school, spend a majority of our time there, and then have our board meeting. So let's say conservatively 5:00, give us two hours. Everyone okay with that?
Yes. Thank you.
Maybe we'll have some light snacks in the high school cafeteria for you to enjoy before the board meeting, and I'm going to go into the meeting angry.
Smart.
So then, we have a list of proposed topics here. Most of you have been on the board long enough to know that this is kind of a fluid work in progress. We've done our best to anticipate what we think we'll be able to present, but obviously there's a lot that's unknown. If there's any topics that you feel you'd like to see a presentation about or have some information regarding that's not here, please let me know. If not, as you are aware, Gene, Paul, and I set the agenda for the board meetings every Thursday prior to the board meeting, so you're welcome to contact, you know, one of us prior to that agenda setting to say, hey, I'd like to, this topic has emerged, I'd like to hear some more about this. And we can decide whether or not we can get it on that meeting, or if it takes, if it'll take a little bit more time to go to the next meeting. There are some exciting things on here, other than just COVID safety stuff. You know, we're hoping to get an update from Mr. Wheaton on our new health and phys ed curriculum programming. You also are aware, we've hired a number of special ed teachers to ramp up our integrated co-teaching. So we have scheduled an update here for integrated co-teaching. Dr. Shanahan has had a ton of professional development this summer, including stuff like the Henry Ford Institute, you know, literacy and professional development, you know, all across all grade levels of our district. So she'll actually be here twice to present an elementary update, as well as a secondary update, with all the great curriculum work that's happening out of her office. So take a look at this, and if there's something that was overlooked that you'd like added, feel free to reach out and let me know. If not, I appreciate your patience in knowing that this is a work in progress and it's a living document. So yes to August 31st and yes to building visits that night. Great. All right. So the last part of the superintendent's report is the COVID safety planning update, which is really a non-update, but I can take you through quite a journey. It's almost something that's made for TV. So you may be aware that there's been some developments recently. Yeah, I wanted to really focus on our planning process right now, because we don't have enough information to have any definitive decisions at this point. But as you are aware, going back to May of 2020, we had a committee structure put in place that served us really well in preparing for last year. So we have six committees that are made up of over 65 stakeholders that represent all of our stakeholders, from students, parents, to teachers, parent professionals, town partners. And our building-based plans typically focus on health and safety measures. And then we have a district-wide teaching and learning committee that's actually evolved into two committees, an elementary teaching and learning committee, and a secondary, middle and high school teaching and learning committee. And then we have a social, emotional learning team. Several of you, as board members, serve on these committees as well to help with our planning. So this is the structure we've continued into this school year, because we felt like it served us well last year, and we wanted to continue moving forward with it. Each of our committees, at my request, met prior to the end of the school year. You know, we were anticipating there would be an update to the New York State Department of Health Guidance. As you may recall, we had an update April 9th to the New York State Department of Health Guidance, which allowed for some relaxing in the physical distancing requirements, and allowed us to end the school year with our schools at almost full capacity. We still had 20% to 25% of our kids fully remote at that time, so we were really at 75% capacity. And, you know, prior to the end of the year, I, in anticipation, wanted to make sure that our committees all met, really with one goal in mind, was to set the stage for the work we had in the summer and try to get some dates on people's calendars, because as things were loosening up at the time, there was an assumption that people were going to be vacationing and traveling a little bit more than they did during the summer of 2020. So we also had our administrative retreat, and Gene had mentioned one of the days was designated for Brian Culpa to come and join us to talk to our admin team and some board members. So the week of July 19th, we focused primarily on integrated co-teaching to get a shared understanding amongst our administrative cabinet about what it is and what it should look like, so we can lead that initiative in the buildings. We had one day designated for a review of guidance in anticipation of guidance being issued, so we spent most of that time on that day reviewing our current plan. issued. So we spent most of that time on that day reviewing our current plan and developing a list of questions that we hoped would be answered in guidance documents. And we also looked at the CDC document, which was out at that time. So, let's focus on guidance. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, issued their school updated guidance on July 9th. They shortly thereafter updated it on July 27th in response to what they were seeing relative to the Delta variant. And then again, they just updated it last week on August 5th. The American Academy of Pediatrics issued guidance for schools on July 18th. And on July 29th, we got this optimistic memo from the Commissioner of Education saying that she's been emphasizing to the Department of Health how critical it is for us to have updated guidance in a timely manner so we can prepare for the start of school in September. And they reassured her from the Department of Health that it would be coming in the, you know, upcoming days. So, that didn't happen. Last week, Thursday, our Commissioner of Health from the state level issued a statement where he said, you know, the state disaster emergency has ended, and schools are the controlling entity, and we wish you good luck, and we would suggest you use the CDC guidance and work with your local departments of health. So that was issued, I think, Thursday. There was a lot going on, I think, in Albany last week. So this was, you know, an interesting development, I think, as far as schools were concerned, because, again, all along, we've been expecting guidance, we've been planning for it, we've had it. So this was kind of a curveball. In response, our local health commissioner, using that charge to work locally, called together a meeting of a representative group of superintendents from the county geographically as well as different districts, urban, suburban, rural. And on Monday, that group met, and they had quite a good dialogue, from what I understand. And the Erie County Department of Health is expected to issue guidance for schools, and they are indicating that they're going to use the CDC guidance, the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance, as well as lessons learned from the past eighteen months, and it, feedback that they got from the field on Monday during that meeting, yesterday. The days are, sorry. Interesting development today, we got an email from the Commissioner of Education, Betty Rosa, who indicated just today to superintendents that the state education department expects to issue guidance for us now. So we went from no guidance to all kinds of guidance. So I put a quote here from her memo to superintendents. "We anticipate the forthcoming guidance will address questions around wearing of masks, social distancing, remote learning, transportation, community transmission tracking, and potential funding sources available to schools and districts that may help with preparing for the upcoming school year and beyond." So, this was followed by an email from the School Boards Association, where they were eager to emphasize that they expect the state education department's guidance to be recommendations, because certainly, they're an education department and not a health department. So, that's sort of the journey we've been on over the last couple weeks, and even the summer, as it relates to guidance. But we are not deterred by that. We have been working diligently. We actually have a full-day administrative cabinet meeting today, just down the hall in the middle school library, where we reviewed, again, the CDC guidance and the American Academy of Pediatrics, because that continues to be the reference point for all these people who are going to guide us. And we are evaluating our plans from last spring and working on, you know, what restrictions need to remain, what restrictions will be eased up, you know, how it's going to look at full capacity. Keep in mind, one of the things I try to emphasize to people is, you know, in March of 2020, we were 100% remote. Everybody was home. You know, by September of 2020, we were at 50% capacity, and we were in a hybrid model. By the end of April of 2021, I just mentioned, we were at about 75% capacity, because we still had twenty to twenty-five percent of our people fully remote. And now, for the first time ever in this pandemic, in September of 2021, we're looking at being at 100% capacity. So we want to make sure we're moving forward with health and safety as our top priority. We want to make sure we make decisions that allow for the greatest continuity of education for our kids, because we know starting and stopping and, you know, coming in and then going fully remote is very disruptive, not only to our kids, but also to their families and to our parents. And we want to make sure that, if anything, we start more conservative, and as things go well and we're successful, we're able to pull back and let up. So I think it's just interesting to point out, we have not been at full capacity in our schools since February of 2020. So we're certainly going to proceed cautiously and, you know, take all of the guidance that we'll be getting now. We have summer committee dates. They're open for amendment, I would think, at this point, given the fact that we're expecting guidance from state ed and from the Erie County Department of Health. We also are planning to have some updates for the community, faculty, and the board. I put, excuse me, anticipated there, because depending upon how quickly we can turn around our plans, will, and when we get the upcoming guidance will depend on how, when we can have those meetings. So these are not yet advertised to parents, we don't have definitive dates, but we're thinking, you know, we'll have some information within a week's time, and then that would give us, you know, a week and a half to revise our plans and then be able to present them at town halls and faculty meetings and the board presentation on August 31st. Open for, certainly open for amendment if needed. We're being very flexible. Does anyone have any questions?
Was the Buffalo school district at the county meetings? Because they went ahead and issued their plan already, right?
Hmm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I thought it was in the news that they, they're opening up with masks and it had to be the whole thing.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
It was intense, wasn't it?
Yeah. I think they were, I think they were represented at the meeting, from what I understand. But, you know, Buffalo's a whole different ball of wax. There's 32,000 kids there. I'm not sure exactly how many buildings, but they have, certainly, it's a lot different than what we face here in the suburbs and in our four-building district. Any other questions?
Have you talked to anybody there with any, any superintendents?
Um, yes, yeah.
Did they say it was a meeting?
Yeah, it was, it was, from what I understand, it was the county asking for feedback from the superintendent's group about what their concerns are and some of the barriers that they're facing relative to full in-person instruction. So from what I understand, there was a lot of discussion about physical distancing as it relates to buses, cafeterias, phys ed, music classes. You know, the mask certainly was a question that, you know, was on most people's minds. That seems to be the topic that most people are discussing, but, you know, it's only one piece of a larger, comprehensive plan that includes multiple layers of mitigation strategies.
So do you see all the school districts kind of going the same way, or do you think it's really going to be different throughout Erie County? Can you kind of see this?
I'll know more tomorrow. We meet again as a group tomorrow. I don't know, the discussions we've had up to this point are quite, there's, doesn't seem to be the direction that's needed at this point. There's a lot of things that are open for interpretation. I think what's also going to be beneficial for us is to see how, you know, from what I understand, today was the first day of school for a lot of school districts down south in Florida. So it'll be interesting to keep an eye towards how things go down there with, you know, the policies and procedures they have in place and the Delta variant. I listened to a pretty interesting report. People think that the Delta variant will continue to spread and cases will be on the rise in our area probably over the next two or three weeks, and then they're expecting that they might come back down. That's what some of the projections are, which is good. It might be a little scary for folks as they go up towards the beginning of school, but then, once we get in school, if they trend downward, it'll give people confidence in the safety of our kid, their kids being at school, because that's ultimately where we want them to be.
So do you have a sense or prediction whether any of the guidance that seems to be coming from all directions now is going to just be guidance or, like, dictates, you know, like, anything that's going to be required versus just recommendations?
I don't know. It's tough to tell. If you look at these documents that are referenced by the people who are producing guidance, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, those documents are, in some cases, recommendations, and in some cases, they're more definitive. So, for example, if we use the example of masks, you know, the CDC guidance says masks must be worn on buses at all times by all children and bus drivers. But then, when they talk about indoor settings, they recommend masks for all students, teachers, and staff ages two and up, whether they're vaccinated or not. So I know, what I've heard and seen and people who have reached out to me, they feel like that offer is a choice. I'm not sure it does or it doesn't. You know, if you have a federal health agency, a local health agency, a National American Academy of Pediatrics, all recommending something, it's very difficult to go against that recommendation, in my opinion, for someone who's a certified social studies teacher for grades seven to twelve. But we will see, you know, whether there is, and there is discussion or debate about whether or not we'll get mandates from the county or whether we'll get recommendations. It's tough to tell at this point, because it was more of a listening session from them on Monday and gathering of feedback. So it was less informative and more of a sharing for them as they're putting together their document. I know it's nerve-wracking because the calendar turns to August and people start thinking about school again. And, you know, for me, I like to be proactive and I like to be planning well into the future, but in this particular case, I think, you know, the more time that passes and the more we can see how things develop, the better off we are. There's no need to rush to any kind of snap decision at this point. Okay. Just going to leave that.
Thank you.
New board. Yeah, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, then we will need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion to approve new business items F1A through H, 2A through B, and 3B through H.
For a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then you close. Approve 6-0. Are there any follow-up action items?
I have just one, that we are changing the 9:07 board meeting to 8:31.
Great, thank you.
Adding the building visits.
Okay.
Please. Put it in your record, it'll be, it'll get done.
Should have got the snacks.
Yep.
So that's why we have them. She gets the important stuff. Okay, so if there's nothing else, we'll need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person and litigation.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve 6-0. Thank you.
We do have a couple of our new hires that you just approved that are in attendance. So if you'd like to say hi and introduce yourself and where you'll be, you're hired to work, please do.
My name's Emily Cassidy, and I'll be an English Language X AIS teacher at Middle School.
And I'm Catherine Mahad. I will be a first-grade teacher at Smallwood.
They're coming to the meeting.
Congratulations. That's all?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.